Yeah. All right, we're live.
Okay, great, then I will call this meeting of the Grand Ray Planning Commission to order. When we left off last time, we were asking some more questions. Your folks here and asking for more information to continue our discussion from last time. And I know that some discussions have taken place with the city as we asked. And I would like to start with you guys coming back with what you got and conversations you've had.
We met with Mike a week ago Monday.
Howard, if you could tap the.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We met with Mike a week ago Monday. I was in person, John was on Zoom when we finally got it working. And so what Mike said that we he wanted to have would be a proposed phasing, HOA agreement for the water sewer hookup, landscape plan. We kind of talked about Janet Simon and property, but you know, if you look at the, that's well above. Wally Drive and won't be impacted by this project. And then stormwater.
More detail.
More detail on the stormwater. John Loy has done some more work and he's on the Zoom here. And I don't profess to be any kind of a stormwater person, but I think he does. So. And you know, some of the stuff that you've got in your packet there is the phasing, pretty detailed HOA water sewer hookup agreement and complete with projected costs. And then the landscape plan, it's a little. A little weak, I'll admit, but you know, the, I think the intention is is to, after construction's complete, re-vegetate where we can on the, on the project. It's no project's complete without the landscape and the vegetation, so. And the phasing, you've got a kind of both a description and a colored chart of, you know, here, 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 there.
Right.
So I think we've met that. And of course, over the course of all these discussions, I think that this project has met all the criteria, the zoning ordinance for a project like this. And you know, I would take any questions and then really push for your approval.
Okay. Okay, thanks for that. I would like to start with a question for Mike. I assume at some point Bjorkberg has talked with you guys about how the utilities are going to work. I know that that was a question we all had from last time around. I've seen the document. Again, I am not an attorney. What did our attorney say?
I am not an attorney either, and ours has not looked at this.
Okay. So let's just keep that in mind. And I think that our attorney will have a lot of suggested edits for how to write the language, but we can talk about what the language is trying to accomplish as a separate conversation.
Okay.
And just make sure we like the way it works before we spend a lot of time and money having our attorneys review it. If that makes sense.
Yeah, well, that'd be great.
This was written by John's attorney. Not a rush factor, I mean, he spent time on it, but I mean, he tried to get it done in a timely manner. Like we, we did talk, we did look at that document, then you had edits on it, and so we, it's kind of a.
Yeah.
Not phase two, but rev, rev two on that document.
This is version two. It does include some new things after our conversation. My basic desire for this deal is that we understand what would be required of future connections in terms of what the rights are and what the payments would be. More to the point, we understand how the system's going to be operated, how it's going to be maintained, who's responsible for it, how it's going to be funded. And all those details are in here, so I think there's answers to those questions. And now what we're left with is, do we like those answers? Is this adequate?
Okay.
The, the basic model here is that the developer is spending their own money to install utilities. The utilities are close to, but not all the way to some of the adjacent rights of way where other property owners might want to be served. Those property owners could request connection to this. They aren't forced to. They could find another way to get utilities to their property. But if they wanted to use these, they could request connection that the association and the city would review that request. If they were to connect, they would owe some money to the developer and the association to pay for their share of this initial installation. Some of that money, again, will go back to the developer. That seems like that's new since the first version we looked. But some would get into the homeowners association to, I guess, fund replacements or repairs as needed. And there's an example in here of how that calculation would work. Those are not real numbers, but they're based on what we think kind of things will happen, based on what their engineers have said the cost of the project would be. It's still a little tricky, I think, to look ahead 10 or 15 years and understand exactly how someone might interact with this. But all the pieces here, if you wanted to do that. One at a time. I don't know how feasible it is for somebody to come and pay for that connection. But honestly, that is no different than if they didn't do the project is the same way, right? So what we're trying to figure out is, did this take the problem from the council's decision last time? No. Where these private utilities make it not feasible for the surrounding properties to ever connect to public utilities? And is it now feasible for them to do that?
Yeah.
Thanks. Thanks, Mike.
Good. I mean, it's, we've had some time, but it's a short timeframe. And to reject in these documents and in the, in the thinking out 15 years. I, I hope that there's some flexibility to do some future stuff like that. You know, certainly Mike and John and I talked a lot about the, the system itself, the, the design of the system, the ongoing maintenance of the system, possibly turn it over to the city at some point in Mike's desire to have it constructed in such a way that.
That if we have to do that.
But to sit here and anticipate, anticipate every minute detail projected out 15 years, I would not conjure up an idea we could do that. But you know, certainly hopefully have flexibility in, in a pattern to follow into the future.
There's a, there's a few, I think, yeah, like, you know, all in the distance, but a few checks in there too, that the city has to approve. You know, anybody who hooks up in their plans. And then there's also, because there's a homeowners association, we have an actual separate fund for water and sewer. And when somebody hooks up, part of that goes into a reserve fund, part of it goes into an operating fund. So it's kind of, I mean, I think the mechanisms are pretty well thought out. My attorney had done one of these before, and I think that helped a little bit too, so.
Okay. All right. Thanks for that. I know our commissioners here have questions. Commissioner Hawkins, you have something you would like to ask?
Um, it's about that agreement and you shared that your attorney had done one other one. I'm reading this. It's a lot of legalese. It's over my head. And so I, that's what I wondered, how common is this with these percentages? And do we, did you look into anything about?
I don't think this is a common situation at all. I think this is a one-off.
Okay, so where you need to.
So we are kind of.
I, I got the premise of it. I, I understand. I, I do think it's not fair that you, as a developer, pay the full amount for everybody. So I appreciated the percentages here of making sure that, hopefully that, you know, it's maintained through the homeowners association. I just wondered if that, those percentages were realistic or not.
You know, they're, um, no, I mean, it's not, it's not like this is happening all over and there's all sorts of models. It's basically just trying to figure out something that's reasonable. And I do think, you know, for the city's perspective, and I understand what the issue is, because you, you don't want to have like a landlocked thing like Anna Hamilton had where she couldn't hook up, but that's kind of, kind of, I think, trying to avoid. Is it's a, it is a mechanism for, as you expand, that you might, if the city's not ready to do something, you might have a model that might work for future things. I don't know. But it's, we're trying to address what the major issues were, you know, and protect all the parties involved.
Great. I mean, if we do have people connect to this system in the future, it's basically operating as a public utility anyway. Other than the fact that we've complicated it by adding a bunch of different owners and decision makers into the process. So one of, one of our conversations was, like they said, if it was to be turned over to the city. And I think one of our concerns is that that might be an inevitability. Is how do we ensure that if it is turned over to the city, that what the city's getting is something that they would have built that is maintained the way that they would have maintained? So that, you know, works for us.
Right.
So where does that happen? In the developer agreement down in the hours? Where are we talking about?
Yeah, I don't feel like it's there yet. I think what we talked about, there, there are ways we could try to make that happen. The three keys to that for me are that it's designed to our specifications, which we know already will happen. And we've got experience working with this engineer and the city engineer on designing things and having them reviewed. So that part I'm comfortable with. That it's built to our specifications, the way that we would do that is we would hire an investigation or an onsite. Engineers are gonna, they're gonna measure everything while it's happening. They're gonna keep good records. They're gonna provide us with as-built drawings in the end. If the developer does that, whether or not we're involved in that process, if they do it to the same level we would have done it, that might take care of that concern. And then how do we know how it's maintained on into the future? That's a little trickier, but I think we could figure out a way to do that too.
Okay.
Because I think the idea of having, say, three or four different property owners attached with their own, either public or private systems to this system, starts to get a little tricky.
Yeah, I think that would.
Yeah, cool.
I mean, they're our customer, right?
Yeah, right. I mean, ultimately, they're our customer.
So I was, I mean, I guess that's the, what I was wondering, and of course, we don't know that, and that maybe is in the developer's agreement or in the final, you know, the engineering work that MSA is gonna do. But just thinking about, you know, okay, so we got 21 residents coming off of this main line into Third. Do we know, like, how big is the line in Third that goes into Fifth Avenue West? We know what that is?
Yeah.
Okay, and so if you tee off as drawn, right at that point through the, below, between the, you know, I mean, your horizontal, your east-west road there. So if, I don't know, it looks like satellite-wise, I mean, who knows what would ever happen, but you know, we have a minimum lot size, which is our 40-foot width, right? So even if there is houses now down against Third, you potentially have, say, six more residences that could go on each side of that. Correct? On the west side? I mean, again, now we'd have to look at what those lot sizes are. So if now we've got 12 plus the 21 feeding in, that's the only thing I think that, because, right, but part of the reason we did the lot size change is so that we could have more dense development in our own zone. And I would assume that if I was one of those adjacent property owners that now had the opportunity to, you doing the heavy lifting, right, there is a buy-in for each one of those hookups. But obviously, those properties adjacent become much more, well, they're, they're worth more, they're saleable. And there is a shot right there at those manholes that are drawn. As, or the sanitary sewer risers or whatever, that's drawn out those circles on the, on the plan. Where if you didn't care about having a couple houses in your backyard, it might be worthwhile breaking those up into whatever it is. It could be two, it could be four, but I think zoning-wise, it could be up to, say, five to six. You know, again, I'd have to do the county site. So that would be, I guess, that's my only thing is like understanding, again, I know Fifth has got the capacity, because we just redid Fifth. I don't understand, because I don't know it, what the capacity is in Third. And we also talk about how much is gonna get torn up on Third, but that's really moving west of, you know, it, it's not the connection between Fifth and Sixth, right?
There's not a connection.
That's not gonna be.
No, so the, the mains that are in Third Street right now, it's a six-inch water main.
Yeah.
And there isn't any issue with a six-inch water main having the capacity to serve this many houses and a lot more.
Yeah, I'm not worried of water as much, because I figured it was six-inch running through there. It was more like this, the sewer side of it. I didn't know what was in there.
Sewer side of it, same thing. It's an eight-inch sewer main.
Okay.
And I don't think there's any concern about capacity for, I mean, we've got eight-inch sewer mains that serve many blocks.
Yeah.
So I don't think the, the potential number of people connecting to this isn't a concern. As more people would connect to it, there may be a need to add more than we currently have drawn in front of us right now. That, that's not, that part doesn't concern me as much as the part about sorting through who's responsible for what in the future.
Right, yeah. And I could see, again, right, something happens and then it's, it kind of blossoms around, right? That's just the way development kind of works if people are looking to get the most bang for their buck, so.
Right.
If, and again, I don't know if that's something that we necessarily have to address here. The, because we're not engineers, but like, whatever, we're gonna have MSA present and have LHB review, understanding that and with the expectation that 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, there is gonna be probably more than likely subdivision and building on either side of this proposed development.
I think it's realistic to expect that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, it's not my area of expertise, but I have dabbled in plumbing and supply and septic. And my intuition is we have, that's not a restriction, constriction. I mean, there's plenty of capacity in a six-inch water main and an eight-inch sewer.
And then my other question was, thanks for getting all this stuff together too, by the way. So my other question was, is because of like the phased approach, I guess, is your, the phased approach of building, is your approach for infrastructure to be the full works?
Probably be phased.
You'll phase that?
Yeah, I mean, it really depends upon the contractor and some of those issues. But we're looking at it as, as most likely a phased installation.
Yeah.
But the first phase has to get up to Wally Avenue, because that lateral then feeds down back to the, so I mean, it's, it's over probably two-thirds of the work, you know?
Yeah.
So I only bring that up because I did try to understand the connection fee and the hypothetical model that was in there. And again, maybe, again, particularly thinking of the east side, because that would be the third and fourth phase. So. Well, a couple things. So we talked about traffic flow. So it seems like road work-wise, the horseshoe is gonna happen right off the bat.
Yeah.
So then, if it's a later phase where now we gotta tear it up to put infrastructure in to feed Three and Four. Right, I mean, I know that's.
Those are, yeah, those are good questions. I don't, I don't know the answer. We'll.
I mean, and only because we like, I think we kind of jumped one hurdle with the like, oh, we're gonna set this up as like one-way flow. But now all of a sudden, what does that change to like road widths and things if now we're actually doing two-way traffic? With what could potentially be, right, I mean.
So I think the avenues could potentially be two-way at some point. On the interval, we wanna, we wanna restrict it to one way.
That's what I'm saying. So if you came down, right, I mean, I guess that's the thing, is you couldn't head east, right? If that wasn't extended now, that road would make your horseshoe.
And, you know, I.
And I'm not like trying to catch you up on anything. I'm mostly just thinking like, okay, well, that's why it's like, if you said, yeah, we're gonna do all the infrastructure, all the road right now, right?
Yeah.
Then A, you would potentially open up, I don't know, as far as adjacent property owners on that east side, would be like, oh, yeah, maybe we do want to like tie into this, and now you're getting that fee to help offset that cost. And.
Well, I mean, if.
I don't know. I'm, I'm just trying to think ahead a little bit.
It's not gonna be an end-all, you know, to everything, because, you know, at some point, there may be more things coming from Eighth or even on Third, I don't know.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I, actually, in St. Cloud, they, they have, they have had developments where the water lines were all private initially, and their agreements with the city were that they would turn them over to the city when it got hooked up, and that's what, so I mean, there, there have been things done like this before.
Sure.
But, um.
Yeah.
But it, you know, the anticipation is that Wally Avenue is gonna be gravel. So it's not like ripping up, you know, put that east lateral in. It's not like you're, you're screwing up much and.
No, I don't, I, I agree. I just, I'm just saying the, the impacts of tearing that road out would have an impact to the other hurdle we jumped over as far as traffic flow and how we could kind of appease people that maybe were here for the first meeting and aren't here right now. And.
And as we, as we phase the building, you also phase the traffic.
Right. Yeah, so the first part, if, if that didn't even go all the way across, it's only five, five homes. So it's very small. And then if we, if you go on up, you know, it's kind of logical.
Yeah.
That, that's handled. And then if we go up Sandy Lane?
Yeah.
Sandy Lane, at that point, the road would have to be completed.
Yeah. Right, okay.
And then the last, the fourth phase, we, I have no idea when that would happen.
Yeah.
Yeah. Can I, can I just ask about the utility? So the utilities will be phased too. I had, I had it in my mind that, that all the utilities and such would go in and then you'd phase your construction.
It may, it may, it all depends upon, you know, who the contractor is, what the costs are and stuff. We may even elect to put them all in when we're, when we're, we're doing things, so it, so.
There's been soil borians, there's a medication for the borians that there's dirt rather than rock. You know, if it's easygoing, you know, it's not horribly expensive to just put the rest of that in. If you, if it's, you run into rock on the way there or, you know, across the top there, then, you know, it changes. But, you know, so it's gonna be situational, I would guess. And, you know, there's a lot of discussion in the last meeting around this table and from the audience about the, the cost of the, final cost of the units. And, you know, I just went home and I thought, you know, everything we're doing here, you know, John is building segments of three city streets, putting in the sewer and water. All these have an impact on the overall cost, so.
Sure.
You can't have it both ways. I mean, you can't have, drop your cost for everything else, but then pay all these, the, for this development. So I mean, it, it's, you have to be a little bit sensitive that, that no matter what project it is, I mean, that cost and money is an issue. And, you know, if you can stage it, that works out better. You know, I think in John's dialogue, you know, it's very typical developer. I mean, you want to use somebody else's money to do this, so, you know, he's looking at pre-sales to do that. And, you know, if he goes out to sell five units and sells 10, you know, phase two happens a lot faster, for instance, so.
I think the most difficult part is gonna be coming from Third Street. That's where the, you know, there is the least amount of dirt, where we have to come up and go in.
That's gonna be, that's wrong.
And once we get, you know, up to that cross part, that we will have, have the most difficult part, so.
All right. Okay. Commissioner, Ben, you have?
I don't really have any questions, just to maybe follow up on, on Mike's last comment about what that would look like, you know, if this became a city utility again or whatever. That last step then of having some oversight or some, some transparency on how and what, making sure it's built to a particular spec, is that something you'd tolerate?
I think we talked about, we'll figure out what's the most efficient way to do it, but we'd have it done.
We'd have some assurances that that, that that's gonna happen, okay?
Yeah, we, we either, we talked about it with Mike, you know, we'd either hire a city-approved inspector or the city would hire the inspector and we'd look down to pay for it. I mean, that's pretty typical.
Yeah. I just want it to be reasonably done, that's.
I mean, that's different than the deals we've done with other private utilities. And, you know, there's not a lot of these yet, so it's not like we got a track record of this is how it's done in the city. With, with Vesta, it's gonna be publicly owned utilities. And so our development agreement with them is that they have to pay us upfront for the cost of doing the inspections. And we're gonna hire their engineer, MSA, to do the inspections. We're gonna hire the engineer. We're gonna pay the engineer, but Chris is paying for the cost of that. So it's, that's not something that we're requiring have done on private utilities at North Scogan. We're not saying that they have to pay us for the cost of those inspections, because we're not anticipating ever owning those utilities. In this case, if it was all private, probably wouldn't require those inspections upfront. But because it's private with this chance of it becoming public, it seems like that's a better way to handle it.
Yeah, I agree.
And I'm deeply into the Heights project, and that's the same way that we, it's a private utility going in, but we've had discussions about as development occurs there, that might be a city piece. And so we're, the city's hiring MSA. Heights group is paying the bill, but they're hiring MSA to do the inspection.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's, it's maybe not that common, but it's getting to be.
So we could see something similar? I think so. I mean, the, the real concern that I have, and I think I've heard from other people in talking about this, is that homeowners associations aren't set up for this. They're not good at it. They have a track record of being bad at it. And maybe we don't want to ask them to take something on like this where they have a chance of failing at it that could potentially affect other people. And so we just need to be ready to be the owners at some point. This, you know, is now the third somewhat large housing development that we've looked at in the past five years, where the idea of should they be private or public has been talked about. And I think mostly because of the fees that we would charge upfront for financial security to cover the installation of public utilities. And the reason this has gone private is because those are expensive. It costs a lot of money. So we, we probably still have some more work to do as a city to figure out how we want to handle this. I know the council needs to talk some more about this still, about where do we want to land on this. So I don't think what we want to do is encourage a heck of a lot more private utilities that act like public utilities to get built.
Yeah, I think it's important that we have something that would trigger or potentially trigger that, that, that reversion back to, to city utility, right? And I don't know if that's one outside person hooking up, or if it's five or it's three. I don't know what that is, right, but.
Yeah. And, and maybe just figuring out a way to, I don't know, to have some sort of sunset, like, okay, you know, save you some money now and then in the future know like it's gonna go to us.
And I, you know, I, you may not want to take it over either. It may be, you know, I'm sorry, I mean, there's, it could go both ways.
Yeah.
Sure.
The other thing is, just to be clarified, the city will collect all the water sewer fees and all of those things. And city-approved meters and all of that, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Right.
Well, the important thing is, we're having these discussions, you know, we're, same engineers are designing it, inspections will be there, the implementation and the, it, you know, what developer, homeowner, or contractor wants to do a sloppy job, I mean, it's gonna be well-done. You know, it's just a given. And then a lot of talk about maintenance is not a lot of maintenance of pipes in the ground, you know, to keep frost away from and.
Well, things happen.
Things happen. Shit happens.
I don't accept that it's a given. I, I hope that all the players involved want to do a good job, but I don't think that we can accept that as a given. And that's why we have inspectors.
Yeah, that's why we have that discussion.
Yeah, and, and I wouldn't expect there to be any major problems for the first 20 years, but things happen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Anton, you had a question last time about.
Stormwater.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you feel that that was covered in any way? I mean, it didn't seem like we had what we had.
Um, I mean, I think at the, so we're gonna see this back in front of us, I'm assuming, at different stages, right? Because this is the conditional use permit, so that they know the blessing to move forward with next steps in engineering and those types of things. Next steps in engineering and those types of things, again, I'm not, I, I guess that's my only, I. So, I live on the Gunflint Trail and I know that when they put the Gunflint Trail in, that changed like sheet flow, right, and I know like. Engineering wise, you can just not have, you know, equal amounts of water can come off the property post-development as pre-development. That's like the standard, right, but what tends to happen is that it's, it tends to get concentrated, right? So for this, instead of it having the full width of the block to be able to come down. What is happening is, at least from again, what are the way I understand it is that it's basically going to a riser pipe or it's. It's able to flow out, but it's gonna flow out at a single source. We have a spot actually where is where power came through up the Gunflint when that got brought in. And like basically, instead of it kind of coming through in the springtime when it's like icy and then running, you know, like that kind of glaciation. Kind of thing that happens in the cold nights in the spring, I mean, the, and even in the winter time when it gets really cold and the frosts is driving. Water out of the ground, like to the east, like downhill between First Avenue West and North Broadway. I mean, it's like, you know, they're like making multiple passes with the grader, cause it's just like a glacier coming across the north side of the Gunflint there. Nobody did anything wrong, you know, that is what is, I think, right, I mean, it's just a change, it's development. And that's the only thing that like I don't, and I, that's not my job to understand it, but I also. I don't know if I quite can wrap my head around how, where. I mean, if I look at the phase one plan, right, there's kind of like one and a half stormwater ponds on phase one. So where, like, where does the, is the, the. I I guess I don't understand how everything is working from one pond to the next with those purple, those purple lines, that's our stormwater.
That's it, yeah, I don't think it's clear based on what they provided.
Lloyd is monitoring if you wanna have him.
I mean, and maybe that's not like what we're supposed to be talking about, but I do think like, I think it's an important factor. To understand where that goes, right, and.
We've, we asked for a stormwater management plan as a part of a plan unit development. So it's definitely what you're supposed to be talking about and you have asked for it again here and have this in front of you. And as a concept, and if we accept the idea that we're only gonna do a limited amount of engineering before approval. To prevent wasted money. That it it's a concept that's probably understandable for the most part. But, once you get too far into it, you can't really know the answers to those questions without getting the engineering done. And I look at it and I have the same concerns, I don't really know.
Well, that's what my question is, like, is this gonna come either in front of us or the council again as it moves through out of the conditional use permit side into the. Cause we don't, we have to do final plat and.
With a.
Conditional use permit that does everything.
For this planning unit development, it's different than our other plating process and I don't think it would necessarily come back to the planning commission after you. Do the conditional use permit, I mean, there's still quite a bit of detail to be added into a development agreement. That wouldn't necessarily have to come back to the planning commission, but could if you wanted it to.
Well, and I don't think that any of us sitting here necessarily, you know, I mean, John Lloyd's got way more understanding and the people at LHB that would. Are the city side of the engineers to review it, also have a better understanding, but I guess my point is, is. I mean, that's the crux, right, like if, like the standard is that we can't have more than what would typically run off the property, run off the property. It's more of like the point loading side of it and I guess that's, I mean, that's a question I had in this phase drawing, so. I don't quite, uh, to me, it looks like, I don't quite understand. So it looks like the upper pond that's below phase two. Is flowing under the road over to the catchment pond that's below phase three. And then, and then that's being channeled into a ditch that runs along Sixth Avenue West. Right, so that's what I see.
I mean, you've added some details that don't exist in this drawing to create that story, but that's the way I understand it too.
And so then if I look at, so that, that's again, I mean, it kinda goes back to the phase side of things and how that works. Because how can we, I mean, you can't really do. Phase ones, stormwater can't just sit in that pond, it's gotta go all the way, you know, that's, that's the part of like. Understanding the utility side of phasing versus just the, I mean, considering stormwater part of the utilities, right? Cause the pond above phase one, or you know what I'm saying, right, does everybody see the same thing?
I think John's available too and he may have some answers, he's on.
Yeah, hi John.
You hear me?
Am I, am I reading that right, like the purple lines are basically where it comes out of the. Whether it's the manhole riser, whatever, like that is then coming through and. I did look at the elevations, I mean, so that does track that lower stormwater pond, the bottom or the. I don't remember now, cause it was last meeting, but the elevations work out with what the elevation of Third Street is for that to go on there. But.
Okay, so, purple lines are, are storm pipes, green lines are sanitary pipes, blue lines are water pipes.
Yeah, okay.
For clarity, so the idea is that all those purple lines drain into. A riprap of some sort that separates out the, um. Or it's not separates, but dissipates the water, so it's not a point, it's not a point discharge. And as best as we can do, I mean, it's.
Right, and that's, you've got the run coming out of the upper two ponds, right, you got that whole, that huge way to have riprap in that. That ditch, but it's the lower pond. Where, and again, I'm not like, I guess that's the part that I trust you guys to do that, I trust LHB to review that. But I, you know, because the standard is we can take this much water off of here, what I don't understand is like. What are we comfortable with as far as like, you know, summertime, not as worried about it, it's those kinda like weird shoulder seasons where. What is, how do we address that in a way short of saying, hey, John, and like. You know, and I don't know, maybe, and I know that's next step, but I, I don't. I'm trying to not just assume in this position here that, not that you guys won't do the right thing, but that. We don't, that, that we're not creating something that what's downstream of that is gonna be affected.
Yeah, in some ways, in very positive ways, it'll be affected too. Like this is taking all the water from this block and moving it east. And there is a lot of water that comes down this hill, not just on the hill, but underground on the hill. That creates issues for the property owners on the block to the south that. Probably get a lot better with all the water heading over to Sixth Avenue first. But there isn't any fixed storm sewer system in Sixth Avenue until you get much further down the road. There's no fixed storm sewer on Third Street between Fifth and Sixth Avenue, there's a beautiful storm sewer system in Fifth Avenue. But we're not there, so it has to get to that, one of the nice things is that because it flows to the southeast. It's heading towards the county's parking lot rather than somebody's basement and there's some unfinished road space there that could be used to figure out that problem. But that's where my mind goes too, is okay, well, we've got the water moving now to this point on the southeast corner of the block and now what?
Well, it is development, there will be impacts in, in the engineering and the, and the rules and the, and what. Everybody's trying to do is try to minimize that impact, uh, so it's not gonna be the same. But with competent people doing the work here, um, it'd be pluses and minuses and maybe more pluses and minuses. But.
Uh, John, can I ask you, I'm sorry, John, can I ask you one more question? Just, just as we talked about kinda the phasing side of utilities and things, like, am, am I right? It's kinda hard, cause the, the boxes are different colors, so I think your purple line. If, do you have that same image, it says like ST dash three is the page that we're looking at, I'm looking at? Um, and so it shows the purple, right, stormwater coming out of the pond that splits in phase one and phase two. Goes underneath the road and then it, it, it looks like it splits, uh, it runs due east. And then kinda curves back up to the pond that's in phase three. Is that, am I looking at that right, or is it, at that point, is that like a ditch potentially that's running? You know, is that subsurface, is it below ground or is that above ground, that, that pipe when it discharges out of the phase one pond? Down to the phase three pond. Or maybe you don't know yet.
No, the pipes, I mean, the pipes all daylight. Um, they run underground and then they daylight wherever they come out and. The idea is that they daylight into riprap. Uh, when the flow, we, you know, wherever the flow ends in the pipe, it either discharge, yeah, it discharges into, into a riprap. So that it's, it's, it's an energy dissipation, spreads it out.
Sure, okay.
Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense, I guess the only thing I was trying to, yeah, I mean, that makes sense, I guess. I was, the way I saw those lines drawing is that, 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 that pond on the west side drains over to the pond, but if you're saying that. Where, where that purple line changes, there just happens to be a line tying in, well, maybe that's.
I think it's definitely meant to, to be a ditch there.
So it's a ditch, but then a ditch that now you've got, those are garages, right, that are on the north side of the road there?
That are connected to phase four, not phase three, so I think that one of the real problems here is the color rectangles are not in the right place.
Oh, yeah.
We can adjust, yeah.
Well, maybe that's what's screwing me up. Alright. Alright.
Cause you wouldn't build that pond at the top of phase one in phase one, it's there for phase two. And you can't build it until you do phase three anyway, because it's going into the phase three pond. So I think that, and that gets back to your earlier questions about the water and wastewater phasing. It's not really quite answered yet, we don't really know. Needs to be thought through some more. I mean, you can't build the pond at the bottom. Because half of it is in the life estate of someone who's not leaving, so. I don't know.
I think we had partial, John.
So because it, well, because that pond basically functions as half and half. We'll build half the pond. I thought we showed rip, I thought we had riprap, but we'll have riprap as it drains out in phase one right onto Third Street. So that we're not just putting a fire hose onto the street. And, and then phase, when phase two happens, that's when we expand the pond. For those other houses and we move the discharge more into that big riprap area.
Okay, that's the part that I thought was, I noticed different this time around than last time, looking at the elevation sections. Provided on the first one, it did show that riprap coming out of the pond basically right on the Third Street. And. We have no curb and gutter on Third Street between Sixth and Seventh?
Excellent transition.
Because if that's just discharging onto Third Street. It either is gonna just come down onto that yellow house on, you know what I mean?
It's not gonna work right now.
The offer is rebuild Third Street with gutter on the south side, because it slants that way.
I knew we were gonna redo Third, but I didn't know, redoing Third and then redoing Third with curb and gutter is a whole other.
Our plan that we had developed by LHB assumed curb and gutter on both sides of Third Street. So the two hundred thousand dollar, give or take, budget number included curb and gutter. Which is absolutely essential on the south side of the road, not sure about the.
So I think the offer and commitment is to do Third Street gutter on one side, twenty feet wide between six and seven. And it, looking at the cost into that, it looked like the fifty thousand, you know, about covered that.
So in terms of the process after here, after this point, what is the next step? So they're here, they'll go, it, you know.
If you mean after here, after this conversation, or after you're done with this.
Cause we've got, we've got it here now, we still, we have some questions, not a hundred percent. But I'm wondering, um, yeah, I mean, it goes to council. They'll have questions and requirements, but then if they approve it at that point. Will see nothing again, or what, what are we talking?
Uh, what do you want to have happen?
Uh, well, I, I guess if you're saying we can have choices.
Absolutely.
Then I think, um, yeah, we would, we would probably wanna see, see it again, for sure. I mean, if, you know, this commissioners are willing and counselors are willing.
Well, this is a conditional use permit that's being asked for. That is a requirement to do a planned unit development, it's a conditional use in this zone. You can add conditions to it that you'd like to see further, uh, steps. That will need to be a development agreement, you could add a condition that the planning commission review and recommend the development agreement before the council sees it. If you wanted to do something like that. It's probably the best next step for you to learn more about what's going on.
I think that would certainly allow us to get more clarity, more questions answered.
I mean, there will be a need to get a lot more engineering done before that is completed. So I think then we wouldn't have any questions about how the water's gonna work or what, what's gonna get built when or anything like that.
Yeah, I can go with the confidence of like, understanding that, yes, like this is the criteria that has to be met and. Or, right, like we.
Yeah, like we're saying.
So it isn't just a, here we go, and I, who knows what's gonna happen at council, um. But, you know, when it leaves us, I think we did get the information that after the last time, it got kicked back to us, I feel like. This especially between the last meeting and now, like this really helps me and I think, um, and I think. I mean, maybe it's just cause I think it's interesting. That's why I wanna see it, but I think it's important, I mean, also like I wanna prove it with the confidence that, you know. It's not gonna be, it's not gonna create a headache.
Well, these are all the next steps.
Yeah, right, and that's what I'm saying, it's like that, 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 he has the confidence to spend the money.
First step is a yes review, the next step is, is getting through the council, then you go back and, and John's got the confidence then to. To, you know, now the project started, now you can go back and, and complete this, what might be somewhat sketchy.
Yeah, I think my understanding is a city engineer is gonna have to approve it anyhow, there's gonna be a development agreement, so I think you have. A number of steps there that.
I mean, the work, the work's gonna be done and having you review it, it shouldn't be a, an obstacle, if that's a condition, I mean, fine.
Yeah. I guess that's the one, I mean, I, I had, I should know what this is called, I know it's called Bjorkberg, but I don't.
That's it, that's a good one.
I mean, I would, and I think that's the condition that I'd put on a conditional use permit and like voting to, like to make a motion to pass this is. That we, after he has the blessing, if this gets through the council before it is like. You know, so we can see the developers' agreement, we can see the final engineering, we can see all that, just, uh. Did it address some of the things that we brought up tonight and again, I'm not gonna argue with John Lloyd. Uh, you know what I mean, about how he should. But again, just to know that like, I'll. Pass this, push this forward, that, um. That, it, you know, like I, I feel comfortable and it, it answers the questions that I can think of. Was that for super long?
I second that one.
Patrick, you got that?
It's, it's good.
I, and I just wanna say that I think it's, I get it, you're our practice one really. So, having that development agreement come back to us and the other stuff. Will just help educate us for the next time we're in this spot and I hope this isn't our last time that we're talking about. Dev- new development in Grand Marine, so. I feel confident that we can learn from this process. I feel confident that we can learn from this process and, um, that, that development agreement will help us all learn the questions we could have asked the last year ago. And we wouldn't have to be here a year later.
Right. Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. And so, or sorry, Johnson, sorry, my, my mistake. Strike that from the record. Um, so with that, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? We've had lots. Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, that passes.
Thank, thank you.
See this at the council.
See you next week.
Right.
I guess you were just described as a crash test dummy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, John.
Yep.
Thanks, John. Thanks, John.
Yeah.
The voice out there.
Alright, have Mike got everything for me you need?
I think so.
For now? Okay. Alright, I'm gonna run. Okay, thanks.